Welcome, everybody. The October 12th, 2023 City of Friendswood Planning Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. We will begin by receiving communications from the public. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the Commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the Commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular Commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Please note the public comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. A red light will come on when your time has expired. Also, out of respect for those speaking, please refrain from any outbursts or interruptions which could disrupt the meeting and discourage others from speaking. I do have a card from Chris Johnson?
That's me.
If you'd like to introduce yourself.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Chris Johnson. I own the property at 36 Wilderness Trail, which has an open permit, and I'm in the process of building a residence there. I'm a 2001 graduate of Friendswood High School. I grew up in this community, and so I was very excited to move my wife and three small children over to Wilderness Trail. On September 28th, though, I was out of town on horseback into hill country. I figured out that there's about to be a new development next door to me, which I don't oppose a development, but the development included a land plan that shows Friendswood Parkway running about 10 foot from my new bedroom window, which has just been framed out. So it is of concern to us, and I'll tell you, I think it's a bad land plan. And I don't oppose Mr. Tannus's development, and the first thing I did was go meet with him the very Monday I got back, because I don't want to be a no person. I don't, I don't agree. I know that you guys have had this job and been dealing with this roadway for a long time, and I think the, the answer that you get from a lot of folks is no. Well, I'm, I am myself and on behalf of six other landowners that are about to front the new Wilderness Trail four-lane thoroughfare, and myself that's about to be 10 foot from it, are not no people, but we think there's a better way. That's the, the position we want to take with this Commission, because we understand that it's a part of the master plan and that it's going to happen eventually, but we think there's a better way to do it. The lots that are there are not, the lots that are proposed are not going to be the lots that are burdened by this, this roadway. It's going to be the folks that have been living in that area, built in that area, invested in their homes in that area that are going to be the most affected by it. And guys, that, that's not right. The folks that should be burdened by it are the folks that are going to know when they come to buy those lots that that's where the roadway is. If you look at the Sterling Creek subdivision where my parents live, they bought a house over there knowing that Friendswood Parkway was there, was coming through, and was always going to be there. They were able to make that decision when they purchased the property. That's not a decision that any of these homeowners, and certainly before we were building this, this, our dream home, we weren't afforded that ability to make those decisions. A couple of things I wanted to make mention, and when I looked at the, the video from the, the first hearing on the conceptual plan, they talked about sound barriers. There is no good way to sound barrier to this property, because these are people's front yards. They're going to front the thoroughfare that's going to be on Wilderness Trail. And if you're going to have a sound barrier on each side, the new subdivision in our, on our side, you're not going to have the full 110 feet you need to get the thoroughfare through. It's just not a workable solution. There is a workable solution also. I, I saw that Mr. Kebiri mentioned that he had reached out to the residents about this. I tell you, I've talked to all six residents that are going to be affected by this new road, and no one has heard from Mr. Kebiri about this. So I'm concerned about a lack of transparency on how this is going to happen, and also just needed to come down and say, there's a better way to do this. And we're going to get behind a reasonable solution to make sure that this road goes through. We're not going to be no people.
I apologize, your time is expired.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, anybody else from the public like to speak? Okay, next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine, routine and ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a Commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, consider approving the minutes of the planning zoning regular meeting held on Thursday, September 28th, 2023. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a second. Okay. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Next in the agenda are our action items. According to Planning, Zoning, Rules of Procedure, all actions of the Commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of a simple majority of the Commissioners present at such Commission meetings. Item A, we have two different portions here. We have a public discussion and a consideration. It's for a zone change request for Friendswood City Center Planned Unit Development, PUD. Item I, conduct a public hearing regarding a request for a zone classification change for property located at 3801 FM 528, which is further described as 106.472 acres of land situated in the Serra McKissick League, abstract number 549, Harris County, Texas, being all of restricted reserves A and C, Clear Creek Community Church, Friendswood, a subdivision plat of record at film, film code number 691601, Harris County map records, and being the residue of a called 135.778 acre tract of land conveyed to Clear Creek Community Church as described by deed recorded under Harris County Clerk's file number 20150231965, City of Friendswood, Harris County, Texas, to change from planned unit development ordinance 2015 through 18 to a revised planned unit development, PUD, to allow a mixed-use development. Do we have a staff presentation, Aubrey?
Yes, sir. So this is a proposed project that will be known as Friendswood City Center. It is going to be a mixed-use development consisting of commercial, retail, hospitality, office, civic, and municipal, and mixed-use buildings, and multifamily residential with approximately 500 units, as well as recreation and open space. The intent is to create a vibrant, walkable neighborhood. All areas of the community will be connected with 10-foot shared-use paths for cycling and walking. In the park area, the paths will be created of decomposed granite and referred to as trails. In other areas, the paths will be created using a combination of concrete with paver and stone accents. Use of the paths is intended for pedestrians and non-motorized modes of transportation and will accommodate two-way travel throughout the property. The extension of Blackhawk Boulevard to, from 528 to Bay Area Boulevard is proposed with the project and will provide additional routes of travel as well as additional street drainage for the commercial buildings. Traffic signals will be added to the intersections at Towns Road and Blackhawk Boulevard. An additional entrance between Towns Road and Blackhawk is being presented to Tech Dot for consideration and may require a deceleration lane on 528 to make that happen. Ample parking will be provided throughout the development in the form of parking lots and parking garages. At least 20% of the parking spaces in the garages are required to remain as public parking, and there may be a fee for use of those spaces. All surface parking areas except the gated area of the multifamily residential development will be designated as public parking. Overflow parking for the church will be included in the plan as well. The PUD will comply with the community overlay district requirements as required by the zoning ordinance. The applicant selected the community shopping center zoning district and the multifamily residential high-density zoning districts as guides for the development. Any proposed deviations to the requirements of these zoning districts are written in the proposed PUD document and the regulation matrix. A variety of uses will provide entertainment, dining, and neighborhood services to those living in the community. Multi-story office buildings will serve as a small employment center to increase the number of people to support the development on a daily basis. A hotel will provide accommodation to allow others to stay within the property and enjoy the amenities it has to offer. The permitted use table defines the uses that will be allowed within the development, and one item of note is that gas stations would only be allowed on Lot 5, which is a corner lot. 4.4 miles of trails throughout the development, 2 and 1/2 miles of sidewalks between the stores and offices, and 2.2 miles of gravel trails throughout the open space make up the trail system. A lake will be constructed to serve not only as detention for the development and regional flood mitigation along Clear Creek, but also as recreation for non-motorized watercrafts such as canoes and kayaks. The lake will be accessible by the public from the new Blackhawk Boulevard extension, and parking will be provided along that roadway. According to the zoning ordinance, a PUD district must, must meet the minimum of one of the following criteria. This was updated by the Commission within the last couple of years regarding PUDs. So the six items are that the land is proposed for development as a mixed-use development requiring more flexible and innovative design standards, or the land is proposed for redevelopment or infill development and special design considerations are deemed necessary, or the land serves as transition between different and seemingly incompatible land uses, or the land is proposed for development of a major employment center or of major economic benefit for the community and for which special design standards may be warranted, or to provide amenities or features that would be of a special benefit to the community, or the land has unique environmental features or unusually configured parcels requiring a more flexible approach to zoning and clustering of uses or special design standards. This proposed development exceeds the minimum of one criterion by meeting Criteria 1, 4, and 6. So this is obviously the third major planned unit development that's been proposed for this property. All of the PUDs have been somewhat consistent as far as retail and office uses with 500 to 600 residential units. They included the 2004, 2005 plan, it had a marina in it, it had a lot more retail, but it included the whole 135 acres. With the church taking approximately like 29 acres of the development, this is the remaining 100 acres of that property.
Okay. Advocate, would you like to present?
I'm here for questions.
Okay. Would anybody from the public like to speak in support of the item? Anybody from the public like to speak against this item? No? We'll move on to item number two. Consider making a recommendation to City Council considering the requested zone classification change for property located at 3801 FM 528, which is further described as 106.472 acres of land situated in the Serra McKissick League, abstract number 549, Harris County, Texas, being all of restricted reserves A and C, Clear Creek Community Church, Friendswood, a subdivision plat of record at film code number 691601, Harris County map records, and being the residue of a called 135.778 acre tract of land conveyed to Clear Creek Community Church as described by deed recorded under Harris County Clerk's file number 20150231965, City of Friendswood, Harris County, Texas, to change from planned unit development ordinance 2015-18 to a revised planned unit development, PUD, to allow a mixed-use development and amend to the future land use map 2021 to change the designation of the described 106.472 acres from public and semi-public to retail and mixed-use. Do we have a motion?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Aubrey, Becky, we have any additional information?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Rice.
Okay. Let me start off by saying, this looks really good. It's well thought out, I think it'll be a great benefit to the city.
Sorry, I don't have your meetings in.
Oh.
I'm sure you're going to ask me something.
If you could go ahead and introduce yourself.
Louis Tannus.
I was just saying that I think it looks really good and seems well thought out, and I think it'll be a great benefit financially for the city. I do have some questions, and probably a lot of these will come back up and be answered during site plan review, but I wanted to ask anyway. So first and foremost on my mind, when I read through all the information, and it's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts, it's a lot to digest, was our zoning ordinance for multifamily use, the apartments. So our ordinance states that, let's see, multifamily residential highest MFRH is 12 units per acre. Lot 12, the documents show you're asking for 500 apartments, and then later in the information it says you're asking for 35 units per acre. So that's almost triple the amount that's in the zoning ordinance.
The current plan you're looking at right there is way under 35 per acre. The minimum required for any of the big five national multifamily developers that we would use in this product, their minimum is about 30, but we're getting away with about 25, 26.
Yeah, I saw you had maybe 28 or so, which is still double what we have in the zone.
A lot better than 35, right?
And I understand. I'm just asking, that's a big step, at least for me, a big jump. So I'm not, I'm not sure I'm okay with that yet, but I'm just bringing up questions right now. There's also a reference in there, in the proposed, or the, the use table for MFR, medium density, but I didn't see anything referenced to that, and I assume it's part of the mixed-use.
The buildings that you see in blue are multi-story buildings on the far right. That could either be medical office building use, four floors, or it could be mixed-use retail with flex space above. So we don't have that designated yet.
That's kind of what I was assuming was going on.
Yeah, I'll add on the, the multifamily. You know, a lot of argument goes back and forth, because the last thing I want to do is put too much of that. But the whole point of putting that in the very, very back is, one, it is, of course, in the rear of the property, and, two, all that retail and upfront, and you have hospitality and everything, every single one of those clients is asking us how we're going to give them a captive audience, or a customer base, if you will. So that land is, has no other use, really. And they're giving me a minimum requirement that I have to meet, or the deal just pretty much goes away. So we kept it as low as possible, and I think we, I have to check the paperwork, but I think we're actually closer to 26. But that's pretty much as close as I could skin it.
I'm not sure how, that's, well. Given that, let's see, considering the number of apartments that you are proposing, I'm just wondering, as a Commission, should we entertain the thought of limiting residential strictly to the apartment area and not the mixed-use? Since there are so many there. Once again, just questions. I'm not trying to shoot you down or anything like that, I'm just asking questions, expressing concerns. My next concern was the phasing, and I'm not sure I understand completely, but I know streets and infrastructure go in first, and it looks like you're developing the commercial aspect of it with Phase 1.
Phase 1, of, of course, infrastructure, utilities, and detention. Detention is the first and foremost above anything else, because we have to backfill in an existing detention pond. So we have to create ours first and then divert that water. The retail will be the very next thing to go. Those deals are already in place. In fact, some of those buildings are already spoken for and full of tenants. So those being on the front row are like, I don't have to wait for the rest of the property to be built. They can go right away. There's utilities on the front, and as long as we have drives, we should be able to get those going first. So to say they're in the first phase, the first phase is dirtwork and utilities and detention.
I understand you probably won't build all those buildings in Phase 1, but they're, they could be.
Every single, every single one of those retail sites is slated to go.
Okay. Phase 2 is the extension of Blackhawk, the Parkland, and the Fire Station. So is there, is there anything in the zoning ordinances? Or if something were to happen and you were to sell the project, or it wouldn't continue, but we don't have Phase 2 yet, are there any stipulations from the city? Because we wouldn't have Blackhawk all the way through, we wouldn't have the Fire Station, and we wouldn't have the Parkland.
A little clarity on that. If something happens to me, the project continues to go on. There are developers in concert with me, and there's levels of that. We control the project, but there's nothing that happens to me that stops us from moving forward.
Okay, I'm just asking if something catastrophic happens somehow.
If I'm struck by lightning, this still gets built. Hopefully, I don't get struck by lightning.
Are there street right-ofways already for the CCISD properties? I know it's going to extend through those, and that doesn't really have much to do with, with Mr. Tannus. I'm just curious.
The, the school is working with us to, we have 100, we have the 100-foot right-ofway on the other side of the flood control ditch on the Galloway School property. We have, that's an existing right-ofway. And then CCISD is working with us to get the road through on the sliver of their property.
Knowing that we're looking at, for example, the, the multifamily and the density, are there any other deviations from our standards that are unusual? Or I know we have more landscaping and more parking than we need, things like that. But were there any other items that jump out, Becky or Aubrey, that maybe we missed?
I mean, just, I mean, the density of, you know, the commercial and, you know, mixed-use buildings, but it's, the floodway makes it necessary to push the density towards, you know, the roadway. But no, other than, I mean, the.
I didn't see anything, I'm just asking if I missed anything. And once this is approved and approved by the city, I know we have some percentage of what might be tweaked, and I believe Tom was asking questions about that today, too.
Yeah, 10%,
Okay. Just want to make sure everything's nailed down and.
Yeah, I don't want to design anymore.
Dots and Ts, yeah.
I'm good.
I think that's all I had for now, then.
Mr. Kerner?
See, um, excuse me. So I'll echo what was said earlier. This is a really neat plan, and I think it's going to be a really neat addition to the community. I did have some questions, because, you know, have a, a thing about sidewalks. It wasn't clear to me that there was, looking at the different documents that we were given, I know this isn't a site plan yet, but that there is going to be the full sidewalk along 528 there that's wide enough, in particular for the students who will be attending the school that's adjacent.
Yes.
Okay. Then back to the question that was, or it was noted earlier that there's consideration for a potential speed reduction lane in order to enable the turn-in at the additional entrance? Is that going to impinge on either that sidewalk or the parking that is in the very front there? Because it doesn't look like there's a lot of margin there.
No, that would, that would all be within the right-ofway of 528. And the sidewalk goes in the right-ofway.
I'm not sure if the deceleration lane is even necessary with two new traffic lights, but no, our understanding is it wouldn't impact any of that.
Okay. And then my last question has to do with the border with the school. What, if anything, are you thinking about for a buffer between those garages and the school?
That's going to be a large buffer with the power from Center Point coming down that right-ofway.
So as in like a barrier, a fence, or something? And really looking to try to make sure that we're protecting not just the students, but also the property, and by that I mean, you know, the cars and stuff in the garage from an errant baseball or something that might come, come across from the schoolyard.
Well, as far as the privacy or security, I mean, we, when we go to doing actual building plans, that's going to be put in place, and sure, we'll have that. As far as way up high, no. But the, their concrete cast parking garages, I, I don't, I don't think I have anything going there. But as far as privacy and security, yes, we'll have something across the property there, and a large green space.
Between that, those garages and the school area? Okay, yeah, I couldn't tell that necessarily from the, the information either. Okay, those are the only questions I had, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Bounce?
On the Exhibit A site plan, it shows garage, 1215 parking spaces.
I'm sorry, which one are you looking at?
That, that one right there, top left, it says garage, 1215 parking spaces.
Yes, that would be all parking garages combined.
Okay, so that doesn't include those in front of the stores and things of that nature? Okay. My, my worry was you have an apartment of 500 units. Let's say you have two people with two cars for each unit, that's 1,000 right there.
That has nothing to do with on-ground parking, that's garages only. And this apartment complex is designed as a mix between slab-on-grade and podium, so there's additional parking underneath the units.
Great, thank you.
We, we have, I think, almost, not quite double the parking that we would need, but we have way overdue parking. We even, I designed an additional 250 parking spaces for the church that I'll be doing at my own expense outside of our property lines to make sure that they don't have an issue with people parking in theirs. So we put it to the side, and we're separating that from our property.
Very good, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Mr. Conrad?
All the drawings, everything, it just looks really beautiful. And I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions, but right now, everyone has added a lot to it and made it a lot clearer. As residents and Commissioners here, I think that it's our obligation to bring revenue to the city. So hopefully, this will be a really nice project.
If it doesn't, I don't know what to do. I think the tax revenue is, is a big subject. I, I don't know exactly the, the benefit to the city gross tax revenue, but I know that this is probably about a $700 million development. So I think that's a lot of value on the ground.
Very good, thank you.
So I'll just, you know, start by echoing a few things Commissioner Rice says. You know, the, I understand the financial side of the apartment complex, but I do have concern with the density also, as he, as he stated. The other thing, the, the first entrance, as you're heading towards 45, that, that'll be a shared entrance with the, with the church, correct? Or is that a separate entrance?
The first one by the first.
Right by the 10,000 square foot building?
Yes, that's a shared entrance.
Okay. And so there would be a lot, altogether, there'd be three lights. There's already one at Blackhawk, right?
Right.
It'll just be two intersections. So Blackhawk will be improved, because it's a flash, or I think it's a flashy, no, it's a.
It's, it's a traffic light, we're going to do a nicer one.
Yeah, the, yes, the, the extension will provide the complete intersection, and then Towns is a flashing light, and that one will be improved.
Okay. And I assume the median's like the little roundabouts there to slow the traffic, right?
Yes, we did not want people speeding through the project, because this is truly designed to be a completely walkable atmosphere. Whether you live in the back, work at the buildings up front, go to the retail, the restaurants, the hotel site, any of it, we wanted the entire place to be walkable. We even have some small kiosks in the center to stop, slow down traffic, coffee shop, drive-through, and the way to go to work sort of thing. The whole thing is designed to be 100% walkable. We tried to take every aspect of developments around the city and incorporate the best part of them into this. We took the park from Memorial Park. We took the, the shopping circle from the Woodlands. We took medical office buildings from Medical Center. Put the road between that and the retail and restaurants to keep hospitality and restaurant traffic away from medical and office and working traffic. And we kind of designed the whole thing to be one totally encapsulated community. And even the park, you know, we have 52-acre park, which will be donating back to the city upon completion. It's probably got four miles of walking trails, three different tiered levels of lake, fishing, canoe, boat. It's, 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 you don't have to leave if you don't have to leave, I guess is the way to put it.
On that note, on the park, is it, so the, the part down there at the bottom right of that image, is that the, is that parking for the park area?
It is, that is public parking.
Okay. And I don't know if you'll have an answer for this, but just general question. What, and it'll be whether this property gets developed in this fashion or any other fashion, but what about discussions with the school and the security of such, right?
The school is very aware of the project. Like I said, they're working with us to get the, the road to go through. I think they actually had to dedicate, they dedicated an easement for the water line previously, and they've dedicated, there's, they're working with us to provide like some extra, for the detention, for some improvements that they want to make in the future as well.
I was about to say, they're, they're going to donate, do some land that we're going to improve their detention for them.
Yes.
Is an additional thing, yes.
Like I said, that, that wasn't necessarily about this particular project, but just as a general question. Okay, and is there any tree mitigation on this?
Yes, the tree, it was in the packet.
I missed it, sorry.
Yeah.
Other than that, I have no other questions. Thank you, sir. All right. So he opened his, his motion to discuss, so now we need to adjust that to a new motion?
Can I, maybe you're going to hate me for this, but can I make a motion to table? So you'd have more time to look at this, and more time to discuss, and maybe have a complete commission? you'd have more time to look at this, some more time to discuss and maybe have a complete commission next time? Is that possible?
So, uh, procedurally you can motion postpone until a date certain, so if you want to postpone until the next council, or next commission meeting, you can do that.
Do we need, how do we?
Be adjusting your motion to postpone?
October twenty sixth is your next.
Adjust my motion to postpone till the next meeting?
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of postponing to the next meeting? All against? Okay. The motion passes four to one.
So the item.
The reason is because I didn't hear a rationale.
Oh.
You, you wanted to postpone.
More time, more time to review it and discuss. And also I would love, love to hear the other two commissioners have to say about it as well. I know Richard will have plenty of input.
Okay.
Uh, so it'll be back on the agenda for October twenty sixth is our next meeting.
Okay. Next on our agenda is communications, we'll start with item A, first is to announce that the next planning zoning commission regular meeting.
We have a more action item.
Oh, shoot, sorry guys. Uh, item B, consider changing the November ninth, twenty twenty three regular meeting to November sixteenth, twenty twenty three due to staff being at the annual American Planning Association Conference. And changing the November twenty third, twenty twenty three regular meeting to November twen- thirtieth, twenty twenty three due to November twenty third being Thanksgiving Day. If there are items that require consideration for those meetings, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, we have a second. Aubrey, any comments?
Um, no, just, um, we do have a zone change item for the November sixteenth, so we will definitely be having that meeting. Uh, the thirtieth is still questionable.
Okay. Okay, now, um, discussion, Commissioner Rice?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Kerner?
Nothing.
Commissioner Bounce? Commissioner Conrad? None myself. Uh, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. All right, next on our agenda is communications and we'll start with, first is to announce that the next planning and zoning regular commission or planning zoning commission regular meeting has been scheduled for Thursday, October twenty sixth, twenty twenty three. Announcement for the date for the annual retreat, Aubrey?
Um, so I think we've decided on November thirtieth for that, for the retreat. Um, if we don't end up having a regular meeting that night, the retreat will be at six P M. Um, if we do have a meeting, we'll have the regular meeting and then we'll recess into the retreat afterwards.
Thank you. Next, receive council liaison updates concerning action taken by the city council on P and Z related items. Councilmember Matranga?
Good evening, everybody. Glad to be here. This is an exciting topic that you guys are working on right now. I will pass along that city council approved on its, in its consent agenda, the second reading of the sign ordinance. So that is now completely done, well done on that. We appreciate all your work on getting that ordinance updated. Thank you, that's, that's really all I, all that I had.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay. We'll commit, continue with communications and comments from the commissioners, Commissioner Bounce?
Other than thank you for all the support.
Commissioner Kerner?
I have nothing this evening.
Uh, Commissioner Conrad?
Nothing at all.
Commissioner Rice? Um, personally, I'd like to say, um, I know the discussion item tonight is a pretty big one. I'm sure y'all put a lot of effort into that, I appreciate that. And we look forward to discussing it further, so. Aubrey, any additional comments?
Uh, just the September D R C report was in your backup material. Um, and the, just a reminder, the A P A conference is coming up November eighth through the tenth. Um, I think Marcus is attending and Becky and myself are going. Um, if anybody else wants to go, let me know. I, um, I'm sure the rooms are booking up, but I haven't heard from anybody else, so Marcus is the only one that's gonna accompany those, us down there, so it's in Corpus Christi.
Very good. Becky? Karen? Okay. With that, thank you everyone for attending this evening and the October twelfth, twenty twenty three planning zoning regular meeting is now adjourned.